Good evening, folks. I come to you as a visitor. I'm from all the way down in Schenckittig, Akamak County. Currently, I am the board chairman for the Ward Foundation. Wasn't prepared to speak tonight, found out about this yesterday. The first thing I have to do is thank the university. We have been partners for 50 years. They have helped us. You know, if it were not for the university, there may not be the Ward Museum. There may not be, you know, we would have the foundation, but we may not have the museum. But it goes back to heritage. I attended some world championships at the Civic Center when I could not even drive. You know, I worried my mother till she drove me to Salisbury. I became chairman of the board in July, and it's been, let me tell you, a whirlwind since July. We haven't been able to catch our breath. We've been dealing with COVID. I understand that the government's deal with COVID. I'm currently the mayor of Schenckittig, so I understand COVID. But with the expediency that we're dealing with, we can't catch a breath. At every turn, we are being told that we are mandated to do this. It's not a choice. You have to do this. You have to evacuate your building. It's, to borrow a phrase of transparency, there hasn't been much transparency. You know, when we were given the choice of you have to leave your building and you have to go to the Powell Building, there was a little bit of discussion in the start, and then we were told, no, you will go to the Powell Building. End of discussion. A few months later, we were told you are being shut down, which came as a shock to us. There was no partnership at that time. We were told you will be shut down. All of your employees will have to find a new job. That was a shock to the foundation and the employees. Now fortunately, the university has stepped up and they are offering our employees jobs, which is great. But what I fear is with Salisbury University, as with most universities, they're not going to be, the administration is not going to be in Salisbury for another 50 years. They're here, they do their job, they retire, they move away. They don't see the effects that happen down the road. What happens in another five or 10 years when the university sees that the museum is not profitable? All the collection goes away? Salisbury loses a big part of their heritage with that collection. I've talked to many people around the country. That's why they come to Salisbury, is for the Ward Museum and their art collection. Now, the collection itself and the building are property of the university. We have, can't do anything about that. But what I am hoping, that like other speakers have said, is we're given some time. We haven't had the time to make those decisions, to work out those plans, to be able to be good partners with the university. It's been bam, bam, bam. You're gone. See ya. So hopefully, the county council can put forth their power, work with the university, work with the foundation, and give us some time. Thank you. Appreciate it.
If I could interrupt for one second. I don't know if there's anyone here that would like to make a public comment in reference to anything besides the Ward Museum. Excuse me? All right. I would like, I would ask you to make your comments if you can make them brief. I want to get to the Salisbury University, the individuals who are here representing the university. I'd like to have them coming to the table to speak with the council and explain what their position is. We're very grateful to have you here tonight. That being the case, it also might answer a lot of questions for those of you who are still in the audience and may wish to speak, but hopefully, through this conversation that we have, it might answer some of your questions ahead of time, and that way it can save us a little bit of time here tonight for everyone. I have visions of 5,000 people standing out in the hall. So I'll let you speak, sir, and then if you don't mind, then you can speak briefly, and then we'll bring the representatives from Salisbury University to the table. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Good evening. Good evening. My name is Jim List. I am the attorney for the Ward Foundation, and first, I want to thank all of you for holding this, for this public forum. And there's a reason you're holding it, and you have all been in rapt attention, focused on every, and been very respectful to every speaker, so thank you for that. There's a reason this is on the agenda tonight. There was an announcement made suddenly, and then there was a counter-announcement made by the foundation, and things have gotten a little bit testy, to say the least. I've been a supporter of SU. I am not an alum. I didn't, I wasn't born and raised here. I was asked to help them with legal and business things, and I was a member of their board for a couple of years, and then I stepped down to be their general counsel. I have worked with the provost and their general counsel for at least seven or eight years now on many items involving the Ward, the university, personnel issues, contract issues, do we do solar panels? We have worked in conjunction, and I have also supported the Bernstein competition as a sponsor and a judge. I also work with major donors, because I'm an estate planning attorney and a business attorney, in support of the university. So I have been very supportive, and it's been a very collaborative effort. And up until recently, the relationship with the Ward and the university has been very positive. Many years ago, the Ward built a museum, and they had some debt, and they were struggling financially. They turned over land and a building to the university, very valuable land. They also turned over a collection that was worth between $5 and $7 million at that time. As you can imagine, that collection has appreciated significantly. So when we look at the facility that we, that the Ward has transferred to the university, we're talking $15 to $20 million in assets in the last 20-some years. So yes, the university has absolutely subsidized and helped the Ward Foundation and the museum go, but it has been a quid pro quo back and forth. Now, the university has stated publicly, the financial situation at the Ward was horrible right now. Absolutely true. Absolutely. That is absolutely correct, and it are, these are their assets. It is their decision what to do with them. How many museums suffered with COVID? We were shut down. That's half of their revenue coming in. They couldn't do their educational programs for the schoolchildren. Every rep, every museum in the world suffered during COVID. Every business that could not open. Of course, the financials are not good. It's absolutely true. But at the same time, they kept going, and then they tell you in the public, there was a catastrophic failure of the air conditioning system. It was one part that broke that took six weeks to replace. That's it. That's it. Now, is the system old and does it need maintenance? Yes. But who's been in charge of that maintenance since 2003, when that asset was turned over to SU? This is Salisbury University building. This is their building, and they have not maintained it properly, and now, when it fails, they're using that as their reason that we have to go from 20,000 square feet of display to between 2 and 3,000 square feet of display downtown Salisbury, instead of at that nature park. So what's happened, and the reason these people are here, is not only lack of transparency, but they're getting told things that are just, they're being misled. They're told, oh, it's a $7 million collection. Baloney. Think about what would happen in Salisbury if one of our major donors gave a Picasso or Monet, and they hung it in the main hall, hallway, and they had an air conditioning failure. Would they fix it? If the painting worth millions of dollars had mold spores on it, would they clean it? Of course, they would. That's what happened. We had some mold spores, and guess who cleaned it? Ward Museum employees. They have cleaned over 500 pieces worth millions of dollars owned by Salisbury University since the AC incident happened last summer. I'm not saying the building doesn't need work. It absolutely does. I proposed to the provost and to their council three to four weeks ago, a plan to transition so that the university was no longer in the museum business, that we transitioned in a way, using the resources of Beacon at Salisbury University and the Business School to create a business plan and a sustainable model. I learned about the news two weeks ago on Monday while I was cooking dinner. I didn't get the courtesy of a return call after eight years of working collaboratively with university. That's why people are upset, because the communication has been sudden. I don't know what pressure the university's under, whether it's the presidency, whether it's the chancellor's office. I don't know if it's coming from across the bridge or if it's local. But we were given three months to basically shut our doors, and then they wonder why the community, these people, your constituents, even the Chrisfield folks, different county, but still your constituents, still our constituents, and they are the home of the Ward Brothers, and it is beaut, if you haven't been there, the collection is astounding. And the foundation does own the name. The university does not own the name, and they will maintain the name. And the foundation, if this, if this decision stays, the foundation will continue educating and doing the business to preserve our cultural assets. I'm not a carver. I hunted when I was young, but I'm not a hunter. I'm an attorney. I'm a country bumpkin here. But I have come to appreciate the gift and watching every second grader on the Lower Shore go on a tour and just appreciate what's going on. That's why these people are so upset tonight. That's why your council room is full of people that want to be heard and need to be heard. Thank you all very much.
Once again, I'm Kim Groves, and I'm a Wycomico County resident, and I really hate to kill the vibe in the room, but this is the actual reason I came tonight in addition to the Ward Museum. But I came to you tonight with serious concerns regarding the lack of progress in the broadband situation in the west side of the county. While I do understand that progress does take time, the wheels do move slowly, much of the work being, is being paid for via grants, but it's painful to see that all the grants have been used up from the, for the use on the east side of the county to provide broadband to Chrisville, I mean, sorry, to Pittsville. Now, there is only hope that there will be additional grant money to come available to work on the west side of the county. The west side has very limited communication capabilities. Once you get past Pemberton Road, Pemberton Drive, your cellphone gets a little spotty. When you hit past Royal Oak, forget about it, you're living on a cellphone prayer there. You have absolutely no cell signal, okay? No matter, oh, I'm sorry, Siri decided she's gonna show her butt. I'm so sorry. So other forms of satellite internet are unreliable due to the number of trees, storms, and other factors that are not the fault of anyone who lives down there. Now Comcast, Xfinity, whoever they're being called this week, has a contract to provide cable and internet service to the entire county. Not Salisbury, not just Fruitland, not just Delmar, not where it's convenient for them to provide services, not where people can afford to pay thousands to have the cable run, not just for developers who get this perk to build big homes in open country, but for everyone. And they need to provide this service without raising everyone's rates sky high. If Comcast or Xfinity is required to provide the service to the entire county under the provisions of their exclusive cable contract, and they are unable or unwilling to do so, then maybe it's high time for two things to happen in very rapid succession. One, Comcast be held in breach and be made to provide said services, and two, the county search for a cable provider who is willing to provide much-needed services to the entire county, whether it's Pittsville, whether it's Powellville, whether it's Parsonsburg, whether it's Wathipquin, whether it's Tiaskin, Hebron, Barron Creek, wherever, whether it's Cox, Time Warner Spectrum, Bright House Spectrum, Chantel, or some other provider, and I just named a few, it doesn't matter. What matters is that the citizens of the county get the services that the county is contractually paying for. Oh, and by the way, where can a citizen get a copy of that contract? Thank you.
If we could ask, then if you don't mind, Representative Salisbury University, we appreciate you coming. Thank you for being here. We have Dr. Karen Olmstead, provost and senior vice president of academic affairs. Thank you for being here. Eric Berchheimer, assistant vice president of facilities and capital management. And to my right, we have Eli Modlin, chief of staff and vice president of public affairs and strategic initiatives. We do appreciate it, and thank you, President, please, for allowing you to be here on your time and on her time.
Absolutely. Thank you for inviting us, and thanks to everybody for being here. I just thank you for the opportunity to talk about things. Hopefully, we'll clear up some questions that are out there and maybe some miscommunication. Also, want to underscore the university's commitment to Ward, the legacy of the Ward Brothers, the Ward Museum, and its future success. Might be helpful, we've heard a lot of history. I thought I'd just quickly go through some of that to set the stage. So there are three entities here, the Ward Museum that we all know, the Ward, the university which everybody knows, and then the Ward Foundation that Art Leonard serves as chair of the board right now. And so, as has been mentioned by several folks, the Ward Museum, the Ward Foundation operates the Ward Museum on behalf of the university, and this came out as a result of an affiliation that was started over 20 years ago, in the year 2000, when the Ward Foundation found itself in debt, associated with probably the building of that initial museum. And as speakers have mentioned, the university took on the debt of the Ward Foundation at that time and received in return the building and the collection. So since then, we've provided money each year, initially $200,000 a year, and now, I think Ed Banks mentioned, wouldn't that be escalated over time? Absolutely. That's moved up to $330,000 a year that we provide the Ward Museum. In addition, over the past several years, we've provided $70,000 a year for building maintenance. So it's responsibility of the Ward Foundation to operate the museum on behalf of the university and take care of, and it's all described in our agreements, take care of the building for that $70,000 a year. If they don't need it, they save it. If they, if they need it, then they, then they have it to spend. And this is the arrangement, and this is frankly, the kind of scale of operations that the university is able to support. So related to our, the university's financial commitment to the Ward Museum, and I also want to address kind of what our relationship with the University System of Maryland Board of Regents is, because they have not been micromanaging this situation. We've been very carefully looking at it on our own. So as I mentioned, since 2000, the university's been giving significant financial support, as you would expect, to the Ward Foundation to care for our building and our collected, collection. The university's financial commitment, as I mentioned, has increased each year, and now is about $400,000 a year. And between that initial payoff of their $1.6 million debt that was accrued in the building of that beautiful building, and paying off that debt costs more than $1.6 million, as you might guess, there was a second debt forgiveness in 2018. The money that we give each year, our total financial expenditures associated with the Ward Museum is about $10 million. This figure does not account for all sorts of services, including IT, things like networking services, server access, computers, other equipment, furniture. I have my colleague here, Eric Berchheimer, who knows all about facilities, relying on the facilities expertise that's available, SUPD and the like. And I'll talk about opportunities very quickly before I close, but I want to mention that we do operate that other entity that's out there, the University System of Maryland Board of Regents, has some pretty stringent criteria under which the university can operate or be affiliated with foundations or with affiliated business entities, and they're very clear that you, the university can't be affiliated with a failing business entity or a failing foundation. And it's, and for that reason, we have had long conversations, not just this year, and pre-existing before COVID, about the need for the Ward Foundation to be a financially viable organization. Related to the Powell Building, you know, in my dream world, we would have enough money that we could stay right there on Shoemaker Pond. It's not just about fixing the building, it's about being able to operate there in the long term. So the Powell Building is an 8,000-square-foot space with about 4,000 square feet usable space for the galleries. We see that space as obviously much smaller than on Shoemaker Pond, but there are things downtown, I mean, it's just thriving here tonight. Lots going on. Third Friday, thousands of people, what, 3,000 people come to Third Fridays on average per month before the museum closed. I think it was about 300 people per month versus 3,000 people just on Third Friday. Got the library here, all sorts of other vitality that will be downtown. The museum's already partnered with the Maryland Folk Festival, and that, of course, is the city's biggest annual event and very important for the county. This, we also see this move as along to us to better care for and maintain the collection. We've already worked to get several pieces into the NAB Center, which has museum-quality environmental control. We're trying to find other appropriately climate-controlled storage for the other pieces, some of which is very large. And the Powell Building, I'm sure you all know, is right down there on Main Street, adjacent to SU's gallery building, where we already have a very large gallery. We have other galleries on campus. We're currently hosting a Ward Museum student art show. It's easier for us to connect with IT and our police. So we're very excited about that. We made a very long-term commitment. We have a 10-year lease that we're working on with, for the Powell Building, and we've, as has been mentioned, we're looking to hire key staff. So I just want to close, hopefully, on kind of, on a positive note, I want to emphasize the university's commitment to the Ward, the Ward Museum's mission. And if, if we listen to this, I think it's easy to see how it might be achieved through the plan that the university's set forth. And the Ward's museum mission is to create spaces and opportunities for learning artistic traditions, community heritage, and connections to the natural environment. We feel strongly that the best way to achieve this mission and to care for the collection in the way that it needs, in the appropriate environmental control way, is to focus on a more sustainable level of operations, which doesn't include a very large 30-year-old building. And this sustainable level of operations is best, best, well...
Excuse me. We can't have comments, if you don't mind. Everybody, listen to everyone who spoke. No comments, let them, let them finish out. Thank you.
So we feel that the sustainable level of operations is best achieved through rotating exhibits within the space. So we'll have different exhibits. We hope we're going to work with the experts on that. Within the space, but the first speaker, if he's still here, talked about Chrisfield. Well, we'd like to also establish traveling exhibits that we could send to other museums, libraries, cultural centers, to get the collection back out in the hands of the, not in the hands of the public, in the eyes of the public. Even if we were able to address all of the facilities issues that exist in the building on Shoemaker Pond, if we had that dream donor, we would not be able to support the sustained operations on that site, given the well-documented financial challenges that have plagued the Ward Foundation despite its very best efforts. I want to thank, I don't know if Art is still here, but their very best effort, this is an all-volunteer board, they have really tried to make it work. So they have tried to make it work, but they have had limited capacity to raise the funds that are needed for operations at this level. We're really excited about moving forward on this next chapter of the collection's history, and we are very excited also to contribute to a vibrant downtown and a vibrant Wycomico County. Again, we really appreciate the time to speak today. I did want to clarify just a couple of points. The selling off the collection is not happening. The curatorial committee of the Ward Foundation had identified some pieces for deaccession that is very common in museum collections, and if we deaccessed any of those items, they identified as duplicates and things like that, that money would go right back into Ward, the operating of the, in care of collection. Terms of student outreach and student, you know, working with youth and children, we certainly, the university's very committed to that. We're recognized as a community-engaged campus. We have all sorts of summer engagement academies happening every year. We look forward to partnering with the Ward and the, in doing that in the Powell space as well in the future. And so I don't know if we will take questions or if we'll just hear other comments, but I just want everybody to know, the university's committed to making this work.
Berchheimer?
Certainly can also add to the commitment that we've placed from a facility standpoint. My staff has spent hundreds of hours in the building, working with the staff. We've spent millions of dollars from the state through a facilities renewal allocation that we get. So we've done roof repairs, we've done siding repairs, we've done painting, we've done grading, we've addressed drainage issues. As many of you probably know, the loading dock in the backside of the museum typically would flood when we had heavy rains. We've spent money to, and both design, engineering, to enable that to happen. So it's not as if we've neglected the museum. We have spent significant amount of money on that facility over the last 20 years.
Can I come on to you?
Sure, and thank you. I do want to just note, I want to stay for questions, but there's an incident that's happened on campus since we've been there here that requires my attention. But I just want to talk briefly about the commitment to the downtown site. Tomorrow, the president's cabinet is approving a request to increase the size of our, our police department, and that's in part to offer more law enforcement services downtown to both the Ward Museum, or the, where the collection will go, and our downtown campus. We've also worked on an agreement with the city to ensure that all visitors to the Ward, to the new site, park for free. So we are continuing to work on additional partnerships and opportunities with the city of Salisbury and the community to ensure as smooth a transition as possible.
Council questions?
I want to say something. I sit here and listen to the comments. Since I'm the president of the Chipman Foundation, we're all a volunteer board, and we know the difficulty of raising operation money. But I look at all the money that Salisbury University gets, and I was a past student at Salisbury State, when it was Salisbury State, but I look at all the money that comes into other buildings, and as Ms. Graham said, there's money out there to keep that building going at Ward Museum. I, I don't want to take sides, but it seems like everything, Salisbury University's downtown all the time, and it seemed like you would do something in the county instead of going downtown. Yes, they have Third Friday once a month, but tradition means a lot to me, history means a lot to me. One of the first jobs I got when I came back to Salisbury, another one was the Ward Museum when it was at, on 13, when the old building, the car dealership around that little circle. I worked for six weeks doing a magazine for the Ward Museum's wildfire, wildfire art show, and I didn't know that these ducks, like the lady said, that they carved and were so pretty, looked so real. And I grew to appreciate what the Ward Brothers did, because I just thought they were decoys for the honors, you know, I was ignorant, you didn't know. But I think history means a lot to people, and tradition means a lot to people. And moving everything downtown because people come, you got older people might not come downtown, downtown. You got people in Chrisfield might not come downtown. That's part of their history. And when you take away the history from people, that's going to do damage to the future. I think we have to look at the past and then how we're going to bring it to the future. I think some kind of way, the building should be, be kept and, and keep the museum. So what are you going to do with the building? You want to leave it out? That's a question. What are you going to do with the building? Is this going to sit there? You sit there and be dormant and then keep going? When you don't, when you have an empty building, it deteriorates. And I think that there is a solution. I'm the type of person, we call the president of the United States. I have done it. I call White House. When I got divorced, I called the White House. So, and it led me the right direction. I didn't get to talk to the president, but you got to, you got to fight for what you believe in. And you may lose, but you got to fight. And I think that the, I was shocked to hear that, because my niece had her wedding reception at the Ward Foundation, and it was a beautiful thing, and we had this, it seemed like you, that's how we make our money, we had wedding receptions, birthday parties. I think if you promote, help them to promote, promote the Ward Museum so they can have things like weddings and, maybe people don't know you can do that there. Maybe new people that come in our community don't know they can do that there. So if you promote that, that's a way to make money. And I think there's grants out there, there's fundraisers, ask these people for the... Ask these people to support the foundation. I do not think we should, like you said, shoe shop, Vernon Powell Building, in that little tall, narrow building, doesn't have elevators, everything is going to be downstairs. How's it going to house even 500 pieces? How's it going to house that? And I just think it's, I just, for me, being a historian, amateur historian, I think it is terrible to close that building and have it sit there and almost slap people in the face from Chrisfield, the Ward Brothers, who were very well-respected in Chrisfield and then nationally, international. These men left a legacy, and they didn't leave it in downtown Salisbury. They left it in Chrisfield, then the Ward Museum. And I think we need to, the Salisbury University, when you don't communicate with people, this is when you have a problem. If you're not inclusive to a solution, this is when you have a problem. And when you do backdoor things, then it comes out in the front, when people are trying to get an understanding, and it's almost like a done deal. It's not a done deal, to the fat lady sings, I guess it's me.
Josh?
Well, I guess I'll, I know, I know, Shaney did ask a question there as far as what's going to happen to the building, and I do want to hear you get to that.
Sure.
I guess I do want to say, first of all, from a personal note, you know, I used to live next to the Ward Museum. For years, I lived there. I took, you know, more than 20 years ago, I took, over a period of six years as camp counselor, I brought in hundreds of kids to the Ward Museum. That is definitely a special space that is unique to our region. It's great to have our brothers from the Somerset County and other folks from around the shore, because this is a true thing to be sure proud of. You know, this is something really special. I guess kind of what I'm getting at is, you know, I feel like that building, that space, that collection, you know, they go together like love and marriage or peanut butter and jelly, you know? That is a space that, you know, that the insides and the outsides complement each other well. And so many of us in this room have been, for many years, investing in that to make it sure look that way, from bringing in native plants to having, you know, to be able to talk about why our larger ecology is so important, how this fits into our culture. I guess a lot of folks are here because they feel like, you know, like me and many others, you kind of feel like we've been left out of the equation, you know? I don't, I mean, I guess I want to know, why can't the math work? And I think that's, I feel like there's so many of us here that if it came time to put our money where the math is, well, I'll probably break out the checkbook. You know, I'd be happy to. That is a special space that is very important to our community, and I don't know what the future, you know, maybe it's a very large collection, and maybe we can do more in Somerset County and Chrisfield, or having other smaller spaces elsewhere. But that building and that collection are truly special for our community, and folks do come, as I said earlier, from around the world to come here. We don't want to lose that. So, I guess I'd love to hear, what is the future of that building? And then, what, you know, can the math, do we really feel confident? Do we really feel like we've thought it through? That you're basically saying the math can't work? We can't, these two things can't go together? So, that's what I want to know. Thank you.
Yeah, I think the university's pretty sure that the math can't work. We can go back and check our numbers. The building is really special. The location is really special. In my dream world, how could it work? And this is something that, you know, the university hasn't talked about at all, but if some entity at the county, like the library, another totally beloved entity that serves the county, you know, if there's state or federal money for libraries, if there could be money to repair the building that came as either federal, state money, county money to repair the building, and there was, the operational piece is the problem, to operate activities out of that building on Shoemaker Pond, we could have part of the collection there, we could have dual enrollment for high school students there, we could have art classes there, we could have weddings there. There's all sorts of things that are there, but to Art Leonard's point, this has been fast and furious trying to figure it out. And, you know, what are we going to do with the building has not been job one. Job one is to make sure that the collection's taken care of. So, I mean, that's something I would be excited to see as a resident of Wycomico County is having, you know, more library space in a beautiful venue that could also have an exhibition space, a gallery space.
I think, when I first heard about... Excuse me, okay. When I first heard about this, I had, I was a bit surprised as well. I've always considered, and from our advantage point as far as being in government here locally, I've always looked at Salisbury University as being a great partner in the community, in everything that you've tried to take on. You've been very respectful. I've been on town gown, it isn't even called a town gown now anymore, but it's your outreach efforts with the community, with the neighbors, to try to make sure that you're covering all your bases. So, when I first heard this, I was very surprised, and I thought, well, there has to be an explanation. But over the last two to three weeks, I think the reason there are so many people in the room is that the explanations just don't seem to be answering the questions, and that's why I was so glad to see that you were all here today. As was said before, we have a lot of great minds in this community. We have a lot of generous people in this community, and it just seems to defy all logic that we can't come to some type of resolution. And I believe the public as a whole is looking, and probably used to the university, solving 99% of the problems that you have, as it was suggested, the great, you know, the great buildings you have, the new libraries that you have. You've done some amazing work in this community, the new stadium that you have, the work that you have managed to do, I think astounds everybody that looks at this university and sees where it used to be and sees where it is now. So, in that same light, people are going, well, then why isn't this working? Why isn't there a solution to something which would be considered as simple as the Ward Museum in trying to establish some type of sustainability? Maybe there's issues where the university, and maybe you don't have the wherewithal, but is the university engaging with our elected officials enough to try to get the funding?
Yes.
And maybe what can be done to sort of help that? I don't know whether, at this point in time, as far as there's a void, I don't know if you need to have a webpage established that people can go online on a daily basis to see what the progress might be, because what we're seeing right now is that there is a void, and when you have a void like that, you get uncertainty and you get skepticism. And that's what's in this room tonight. And it's really a shame that it has gone this far, because there is so much respect for your institution and you as individuals here. I know you personally. So, that would be my real question. Is there not a way to buy some type of time here? Where could we begin to establish collaboration? What might these people do if they have to go to Annapolis and testify or write letters? Who would they write those letters to? Where is the next direction? The guidance that we need, since you are the owners of this entity? What can we do to help you to the next step as opposed to what no one feels is the right solution, to just shut it down or box it up or limit the space in the downtown area?
I think, I think one thing, just to make sure that we're all keeping track of, is that the various entities involved that the provost mentioned, that we are the owners of the collection and of the building, but the Ward Foundation operates the museum on behalf of the university. That means that it is, in fact, the Ward Foundation that would need to get the increased funding and so forth. I served on the board of the foundation for three years, and I remember both as a member of the president's cabinet, over multiple presidents, now this is my third one at the university, and as a member of the board, efforts that were made to seek additional federal funding and additional state funding that frankly have not borne enough fruit to make the Ward sustainable from an operational standpoint. The provost mentioned the increase over time that the university has been giving for the operational funds, at the same time that the Ward Museum's revenue has declined. And as the provost mentioned, that is not, for lack of trying, from the foundation. This is something that we are seeing at museums across the state of Maryland and across the country. And one of the things that we are doing, I think, is showing our commitment to the Ward by hiring some of those employees to give them sustainability, and also using our system to seek additional grant funding to make sure that that collection, that that heritage is maintained. We are excited about the opportunities presented. We understand the frustration that the collection won't be in the same building. We get that. And I think, as the provost mentioned, in an ideal world, things would stay as they were. Unfortunately, that's not the circumstance that we find ourselves in. We certainly have been at the foundation's back, at the staff's back, as they've sought that extra funding, and we have filled in that extra funding with university funds. Ultimately, the state gives us funding to serve the critical mission of the university, and we could not continue to increase the funding as it was necessary to operate the museum. And that's how we got to this point. We funded the Ward Museum through the foundation through July 1st to continue operations, and we did have a communications plan in place leading up to that date. News broke out sooner than we wanted, and that's why this kind of felt like the community wasn't involved in the plans as they were. But that's the way it went, and that's the honest truth, you know? That's what it is, so.
But they weren't involved.
Joe, Madam Provost, you mentioned the library. Has there been any conversations with any county officials or the library board about, seemed to be an idea you had?
No, I have a colleague who is on the board of the library. She said, I wonder if there is any money for libraries. And, you know, I think we are open to hearing about all different ideas, but going back to kind of first things first, we got to make sure that we get the new space fitted out, the collection taken care of, the programming back up, but that is something, a conversation.
I know everybody's asking for more time, but it seems like you said you were talking about signing a 10-year lease, or looking at a 10-year lease a few minutes ago.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's being drafted as we speak.
So, even if funding was found, university's not interested in giving more time? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, I just think that, to be clear, it's not just about the one-time funding for the building. The real problem at hand here is the operational funding, and our mission in finding a new location is finding somewhere that we can guarantee will be sustainable longer than the next, you know, need to fix the building or something like that.
Scope of operations.
That's right. We want long-term sustainability for the collection and for the museum.
And I'll add to that, if I may, but, you know, I've worked with the staff there for years, and I know for a fact, they shut down the system to save electricity, because they couldn't pay the electric bills. So, it's, even if we go and we replace those systems and get everything back operational, they don't have the funds operationally to pay the bills, the electric bill, the gas bill, the water bill. That's more important. You can't do one without the other. You have to have both.
I would think you need to have some type of a white paper online. As it was suggested earlier, the community can't help you if the community doesn't know what the specific problems are. The community needs to know exactly what the debt load is, they need to know exactly... They need to know what the annual ongoing expenses might be. I mean, somebody might say, why don't you just sell it to the foundation? Let the foundation take it. But we don't know what that might entail, and that could be terribly foolish for me to even suggest it, because I don't know all four corners. But I think the more information we have, and maybe the more effort that we can begin to engage in members of the community, maybe you could have a point person, as busy as you all are, if there might be a point person that could work more closely with the foundation and the other individuals interested in this room, and maybe even the government, though I don't know if the county has a specific role in this type of enterprise. But I think we would just like to see some type of progressive efforts in making something happen that everybody can agree on, and we might be able to salvage what there is. Yes, James?
Yeah, I was under the impression that it's a 30,000 square foot building. It's a big building, and there's 12,000 square foot of it that's occupied as used for the art. Maybe, could it be an idea, because I know the people in the county don't want to go downtown to a museum, and I don't blame them, but that's just from what I know, but could it be, maybe we could incorporate maybe a library with the Ward Museum, just so we can get library funding for the Ward Museum and maybe combine costs? That way, we're not moving the whole foundation. It's just, these are just thoughts and ideas, because these people, the people in the audience here are really concerned about this, and they should be. And I'm glad that they're here, and I'm glad you guys are here, out of your time, and to help alleviate some of these concerns, because this has just been a pot that's been boiling, and everybody here, up here, has heard lots about it. And like I said, I'm very happy that you're here, but that is just something that I've been thinking of, is could it be maybe that we could come back to the drawing board and say, hey, what can we combine the Ward Museum with to? I don't want to speak for any people in the Ward Museum, because I don't want to get anyone upset with me, but I'm just trying to think of a solution to this issue, because we need a solution. And if the Powell Building is, obviously, we don't really have a say on what you guys do, but if the Powell Building is somewhere where it's going to go, then there's going to be a lot of upset people in the community, so.
Do you have any more comments that you wanted to make, any other additional?
I just think to your last point there, we are certainly, the provost mentioned that our first task is taking care of the collection and getting it open to the public again. I think at that point, we will be open to working with members of the community, members of this council, to figure out what we can do that makes sense for the university and for the community at the Shoemaker Pond site, and certainly, whether that means continuing some sort of art displays, I think all of that will be absolutely on the table. Right now, our focus is taking care of the art collection at the Ward. It's been our...
We thank you for being here. Again, we weren't trying to fund a solution tonight. We were just trying to create an open dialogue, and hopefully, we can get some exchange and progress out of this. We do appreciate you taking your time. I know that Richard Inslee, you do have yourself and a couple other individuals that were going to speak tonight here for us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kana, for inviting us to be able to speak to the issue of the Ward Museum.
If I could ask you, you would have to have a seat so you can have a mic, because they're not going to hear you on packed...
I'll sound more important that way.
Thank you.
My name is Philip Lebel. I'm a retired professor of economics from Montclair State University, not Salisbury State University or Salisbury University. I am a resident and native of Salisbury, and I have taught at Salisbury University. I believe it to be a very important institution, so I hate to see their reputation get tarnished as a result of what I see as a great tragedy that's unfolding. A group of us got together rather spontaneously. I have no agency to speak officially on behalf of the Ward Foundation. Certainly, as I might be responding to the university, I'm just a citizen. What you may have seen or heard about is that a few weeks ago, when the first announcements about the closure of the museum came forth, it struck a lot of people, including myself, as bizarre. We couldn't make any sense of the numbers, the logic, and we didn't hear any conversation about it. And so, I'm the devil who started that petition. We have almost 5,000 signatures on that. I heard one comment coming out of the university, well, it's not important, because all these people, a lot of people are from other locations. My answer to that would be, yes, it's because the museum has a reputation that transcends the frontiers of Salisbury, Maryland, and Wycomico County. It's just evidence of the significance of that institution. Well, what are we here to do tonight? I'm not going to believe it, I think everybody's going to get a little tired in this. Laura Hurley tells me if I behave myself, I can get this thing to work. She has to sign in. What I want to show you is a three-minute video of the celebration of the 50th anniversary of the Ward Museum. It's just for those of you who have not seen the museum directly, to get a chance to see how important it's been to the community over years. So, can we start? Let's see how we're going to go with this. Does that do it? This is a short one, so try not to fall asleep. The Ward Brothers, Lem and Steve. Steve was the oldest, Lem was the youngest. They were both barbers in the town of Chrisfield, Maryland.
And in between haircuts would carve decoys, and over time, the barber shop kind of ceased, and the carving became an international sensation.
Well, the Ward Foundation began in 1968, primarily from a group of men who were interested in recognizing the Ward Brothers.
The Ward Museum pairs the very best...
The Ward Museum pairs the very best of the eastern shore with high culture.
The opportunity for young people to begin to appreciate what we have right here where we live.
Residents, families, and young children, as well as the Salisbury University students, tourists and visitors to this region can directly or indirectly have an impact in the future, especially as pertains to the preservation policies and protection of this environment.
When the museum was accredited in 2001, it showed that we had met and exceeded the standards of the museum field by the accrediting agency, but also showed the community that we really did have something special here.
It's nice to know how special it is, but it's great to be told by the world that, yes, that is a special institution.
The city of Salisbury is the only community of its size in the country to have an accredited museum and an accredited zoo, and it shows the folks around here that they really do have a high standard of what they expect from their cultural institutions.
There are numerous educational programs for diverse audiences here at the Ward Museum.
Our relationship with Salisbury University has really been one of the lasting achievements in our organizational history. It's helped us deepen and extend our educational connections throughout the community and campus and improve the overall quality of everything we do here at the Ward Museum.
Probably the thing that impresses me most, or has impressed me most about the Ward, is the breadth and depth of its educational programs.
I believe the hands-on approach that the museum offers provides an applied learning.
Yeah, ever since I was a kid, I remember the Ward Museum showing up in our schools. So touching the lives of 23,000 individuals in Wycomico County is powerful and special, and not too many institutions can say that. But the Ward Museum touched my life, and I know that it is touching the lives of many kids every single day in our school system.
The ongoing opportunities and programs that are presented here is just stunning.
The museum itself provides a historical record of the people, the culture, and the traditions, as well as the changing habitat that you see here on the eastern shore. These learning centers are critical for the understanding of who we are, where we came from, and what we may need to do in order to continue our existence into the future.
Now, they're preserved. They are put together so that it could be utilized as we go forward in the next 50 years.
So that gives those who've never had the opportunity to visit the museum to get an idea of just how significant it is, what the legacy of that institution is, and how it really embodies the culture of the eastern shore in a very meaningful way. We had four people that had volunteered to come to speak this evening. You heard from one, which was basically Martha Graham. She spoke in the free session. I had spoken with Norm Conway, who wanted to come this evening. I had a conversation with him at 4:00, and he really wasn't feeling well. So I said, "Well, we'll certainly acknowledge that you had intended to offer your voice of support for the Ward Museum." So it's just left with Richard Insley and me, high school classmates from Wycomico Senior High School. I'm going to ask Richard if he'll talk, and then I'll say a few words.
My name's Richard Insley. I don't have any official connection to the Ward Foundation at all. I'm not, have not been a donor, have not been a volunteer, I've not been a board member. I'm just plain John Q. Citizen here. And the reason I'm here is because I feel that the Ward Museum is a huge community asset. And frankly, I feel the same way about Salisbury University. And if somebody told me that Salisbury University was about to be extricated from the campus over on College Avenue, I would feel the same way about that that I feel about the Ward Museum being extricated from the building on Shoemaker Pond. It sort of reminds me of the scenario of the father and son, where the father decided to give his home and his assets and so forth to his son, trusting that he would be able to live there the rest of his life, and a few years down the road, found himself being evicted. Who expected this? And let me say that I should possibly be delivering my remarks to the Board of Regents as well as SU, because I realize that the Board of Regents sets the agenda. And so, to the SU folks who are here, I would just say, if this is more appropriate to have the audience be the Board of Regents, then please do what you can to get that message to the Board of Regents. The message that's been delivered is that there is no money. And we've heard about how much money the museum has been losing. Well, did anybody think a museum was going to be a profit-making institution? The university willingly accepted the assets, the building and the collection, now valued I don't know how much. I've heard numbers from $10 to $20 million. An asset like that is not gifted without some expectation. And the expectation here was the founders, the organizers, were looking for a means to perpetuate the museum and the collection long past their own lifetimes. And they thought they had found it with Salisbury University. It's a public institution. It's a taxpayer-supported institution. I've heard about the amount of money that SU has provided for maintenance or upkeep or this and that at the museum. Well, it's an asset of the university, just the same as the Purdue School or the Seidel School or the Henson School. Nobody would consider commenting on how much the university contributed to support the maintenance of the Purdue School building or the Henson School building or those things. They're assets that belong to the university. I mean, look on the Maryland Department of Assessments and Taxation website if you want to know who owns it. It's the state of Maryland and its constituent institution, Salisbury University. When you accept an asset and a gift like that, there are responsibilities that come along with it. And one of the responsibilities is to perpetuate it. When Norm Conway was in the legislature, one of the things that he got accomplished, one of many things, you only have to look at the Salisbury University campus to see a number of the things that he got accomplished. There's a building there that bears his name, and for good reason. Norman was able to procure a stipend, an annual stipend from the state in the amount of $200,000. And that was, and Norman has told me this, that was for the purpose of helping to support the museum. I've learned recently, been told recently, that when the Ward Foundation departs the museum building on Shoemaker Pond, that the university plans on keeping that $200,000 stipend, rather than for that to go along with the museum, with the foundation. Does anybody think that the Ward Foundation would have given this asset to the university if they thought something like this was going to happen? I've heard numbers regarding the move to downtown that SU was going to support the rent for first a year and then an additional year. Well, then what? It sounds like to me that that is an ideal program to shed the responsibility of the museum. And frankly, at the end of a year or two years or three years or however many years, then who's going to pay the rent? We know that museums, whether it's the Ward Museum or any other museum, I challenge you to find one that makes a profit. They all are supported by something, some institution, something. In this case, the taxpayer is the one who supports Salisbury University. I don't think the Purdue School or the Henson School or the other schools, Holloway Hall, they're not self-sustaining. They're a drain on funds. You expect them to be. You don't expect them to generate the income to pay their electric bill or their maintenance bill or whatever. It's part of the institution, and the taxpayer supports the institution. And I think frankly, that was the intention in the gift of this asset to the university. Frankly, if the rent is going to be paid for a year or two years or five years, however many years it is downtown, if I were the landlord, if I were Palmer Gillis, I wouldn't touch that with a 10-foot pole. Because what happens at the end of two years or three years or five years? Who's going to be the bad guy when the museum can't pay its rent and he has to evict them? That's just passing the buck to me. So I'd say to SU, or in this case, probably the Board of Regents maybe is the more appropriate recipient of this message, is do the right thing. Keep the museum where it is. It should be a responsibility of the taxpayers, the same as any other asset of the university. Thank you.
Given what has been said earlier in the open comment session, that preempted some of the things that I would have said. I think the message that you all are getting is the lack of consultation that has really disrupted everybody, gotten them all upset, where it has not been broader communication. We have been told previously that this was to be done without a lot of exposure, but the truth is that the Ward Museum building is not the same thing as a Blackwell Library being closed and creating the Patricia Guerrero Academic Commons. It's an off-site location. And the university's argumentation has been to move the collection downtown next to what they own as the gallery space, where they have greater management control, or as was cited earlier, that they have greater police protection. Frankly, I'm concerned that if they disperse this collection, there are security risks for thefts and displacement and valuable artifacts being lost in the process. Once you move them away from one source location, that's a serious risk, even with the best of intentions about rotating and lending a collection. I was able, along with Richard, to make a visit to the museum Friday a week ago. What we looked at was, everything seems to be operating. We were pointed out how much white mold was there. We found practically nothing. We were told that of the 500-some decoys that are now at the NAB Center, only six of these, when they were being cleaned, displayed or demonstrated any presence of mold. So the stories about catastrophic failure, that there's pervasive failure of the building just doesn't ring true when we hear the reality that's coming down to us by people who are informed to do so. Now, I cited in the original petition some estimates about the various costs. I agree that those probably are subject to investigation or cross-examination, simply because we have been trying to find out more facts about this. I frankly have been puzzled when the university has touted the figure of up to $19 million to totally renovate the museum building. That's an extraordinary, you could build a brand-new museum for $7.5 million. So these numbers are not adding up, and I hate to see the university looking bad for this. I'm not here to beat up on the university. I believe, as Richard does, it's an important pillar of this community. And yet, I think this decision is totally wrong-headed. I think it is absolutely going the wrong direction, and I think the consequences have yet to be unfolding. But I repeat what others have said, if you move it downtown, you're not going to get the coverage, you're not going to get the audience that you had, and you certainly don't have the display space. So for that, that's why I chose to speak up, and I do so simply as a citizen. I'm not on the Ward Foundation Board. I have no presence there. I have no agency whatsoever. I'm simply a citizen who got upset to the point of saying, "We need to have a petition to engender some kind of a discussion about this." You here on the council have heard a lot tonight, and you've been implored to sort of take some action to try to bring things around. And now, Richard has just echoed, maybe speaking to the Board of Regents has some role in that. I don't know what your responsibilities are, but I will simply say, as a county council organization, you do have a responsibility to take some degree of insight and oversight as to what's happening with the Ward Museum. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. We appreciate you taking the time to be here as well. What we'll do, we'll open up the public comments, continue the public comments, but I'd like to try to move this on as quickly as possible. We have a two-minute limit per individual. We have to do this, because if not, we are going to be here until 10:00 tonight. I don't think anybody really wants that. So again, we open the floor. If you could, state your name, your county residence, your concern, and again, try to stick within the two-minute limit. Thank you.
My name is Mark Haverland. I'm from Wycomico County, originally from Southern California, and I have been to many museums all over the world. I have yet to see one, except for maybe the Louvre, that actually makes money. But what you're hearing tonight from the people here is that they want to work with you to preserve this. There is an effort for them to be here, and they want to work to help on this issue. They are having problems with how you're going about it, which is why the uproar. Communication and working together, I think is going to be your best path forward if you can be open to, "How can we help?" And that might be your key. How can the rest of this county, how can everybody here, help you keep the Ward Museum going? You seem to have a lot of people interested in that. Please listen. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Krista, and that is maybe my first public speech in this country. I'm an American citizen since two years, and I must say, I'm thankful. And I'm living here in this town of Salisbury, having been in capitals of the world, with the, really with the appreciation of this museum. I'm coming in a country where I'm believing here are people who can do business. This is what America is all about. What can we do in order to take some students from your business school, put them forward, and take, "Here's this project." We have to make it work that this museum stays where it is. Just the approach you bring here is something which I'm surprised of. The approach should be, we need to keep this museum going where it is. What can we do for doing it? You might have done things, but I think we wouldn't have so many people here. I think the publicity of all of this is not done. If you involve the community, if you involve a group of young students, we don't have young students here today, there are no young people. Get them involved. Just try it, and then present it to the community. I think everybody would then understand, okay, there is a necessity for paying whatever bill has to be paid. But the goal has to be, the museum has to stay where it is with the art collection. And I'm telling you something else. I'm from East Germany. During the time of unification, artifacts just disappeared, because we had new people taking new on, new museums were built, everything was beautiful, the art disappeared. Now, I don't know where it went. My first question when I heard what's going on here is, "Do you have an inventory?" And everybody said, "I don't know." There is a lot of money behind it. The first time when I was at the Ward Museum, I went out to the parking lot because there were people selling decoys. Now, I thought, "That looks good in my..." don't put it in a bank, buy decoys. That is when I learned how much value is behind all of this. And it's not only the money, it is the value which comes from the region. It's our heritage here. I mean, I'm saying "our" because I'm living here. I don't know how many people from the university representatives are actually continuing to living in Salisbury, or are they being then somewhere where they continue with their jobs? The goal has to be, and we have to involve young people, and the university has it. Just get a group of people together, get a project done, how to save the Ward Museum. Thank you.
Good time. If you're not up here in 30 seconds.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Darlene Taylor, and I'm actually the mayor of Chrisfield. Yes. And thank you for that. I'm here, I'm here because so many people have said to me, do you know what it means to have the Ward Brothers' legacy and their heritage come from Chrisfield? And it is a huge, huge honor for us. I came tonight not intending to say anything, and I actually spoke out to the mayor here before I did, before I came. I reached out to him because I came to learn what was going on. Like many of you, I had no idea what the real issue was, why the museum may be leaving its original spot. So, for me, I just wanted to understand what makes sense. And so, I thank you for holding this forum tonight, because for me, it was very, very informative to understand more about what's going on, what are the possibilities? Because what I heard tonight said to me that there's still a possibility that things could be worked out, maybe to everyone's satisfaction. We don't know yet. But I say that to say, only from a Chrisfield perspective, I'm saying, consider your alliances. Not only am I the mayor of Chrisfield, but I'm the director for It Takes a Village to Help Our Children. And I say that to say, this is your village, and the village extends even past Salisbury. We, Chrisfield wants to be part of that alliance. We have a Ward Brothers workshop, does not get the notoriety that the museum does, but there are things that can be done where we can work together on the shore to make sure that that legacy continues, that heritage continues, that we intertwine those resources between Salisbury and between Chrisfield. So, Chrisfield wants to be part of that alliance. We want to be part of the solution. So, don't forget about us, the Ward Brothers, what it means to our people, what it means to our legacy, and what it means to the Chrisfield heritage. So, I thank you.
Good evening. My name is Doug Hotten. I've been a volunteer at the Ward Museum since 2008. I'm a native of Wycomico County. My mom bought shoes for me down at where they want to put the museum. So, a lot of good comments made. Some of my questions have been answered, but some haven't. And I, the number-one thing is, this building they want to move it into, has it got all the heating and cooling systems ready to go? No response. What's the, you know, and somebody brought the excellent point about the rent of the place. There's apartments above it. They don't have a pond next door to education. And that's one of the, a lot of people know that. One of the biggest involvements at the Ward Museum is education of our youth. And they take them right out to the pond, they watch ospreys fly by, and, you know, they bring them right back in. They don't have to walk to the river or anything like you would have to do at the Powell Building. Like I say, it's, a lot of stuff has been covered. I'm like a lot of people, I've been puzzled by the confusion in getting the word out. I'm retired from the Department of Natural Resources. I was a wildlife biologist. And I've been in things where it goes wrong like this, and most of the time, we look at ourselves and we say, we didn't do this right. We didn't put it out ahead of time. If you're scared of the message, maybe you're doing the wrong thing. And that's all I got to say. Thank you.
My name is Chris Pusey. I'm formerly a Salisbury resident. I live in Worcester County now, but I grew up across the street from the university. I used to sneak into the Ward Foundation as a little kid. And in doing so, that inspired me to be a carver today. I'm a carver, been a carver for 30 years. I'm a collector of decoys. I've been entrenched in the decoy collecting and the waterfowl art for a number of years. I do it every day. One thing I can assure you, I've heard the, a lot being said about raising money for the Ward Foundation. One thing I can assure everyone in this room, that that community is so much larger than what everybody here sees. This is a millions, millions of dollars are transpired in this community every year on a routine basis. I can show you auction results. Lots of money transpires in this community. If this situation was transparent before, if we were talking, trying to do business together and make a win-win out of this, I can assure you, this community more than can afford to make this thing run if we had transparency, if we were talking, if we were doing business. We need to do business. This is a, this can't go away. We need to talk. We need to sit at the table, figure this out. I can assure you, this community can come up with the resources to make this work. If we have to go back to the drawing board, come up with a better business plan, let's do it. We're all smart enough, we all have the resources, let's do it. Shutting the door on us is not the way to go. This community can pull together and make this work. We need the opportunity. Please. Thank you.
How are you? My name's Captain Joe Lappin. I'm a citizen of Wycomico County, and it's very disappointing to see what we have going on, and I have more questions than I think we have solutions. And I always come back to some things, and it comes back to my foundation. I was born here. I was raised here, and I'm going to pick on one of my friends over here, Ms. Brown. Her father was my neighbor, and he was one of the first curators at the Ward Museum. And I know the work that that family put into that museum, I'm going to give them credit on that, but I'm going to speak to the university, and I'm going to ask you a couple of questions. Drawing on my strong spiritual face, loop 12, 2, and 3 says that nothing, nothing that is covered up will not come to light. There's a lot of covering up in some fashion, and I can't quite smell it, but being a waterman and being a captain, what I can tell you is, is that when I lose a fish in my boat, three days later, I can smell it. Okay? And that's the God's honest truth on that. And I see a lot of people talking about how good this is in our community, and it is. It's one of the biggest things in our community. As a child, I grew up as an artist, and Meg's father was an encourager for me. I have a fine art degree. Okay? Not only am I a captain and a waterman and work with my hands, but I have a fine art degree. And I'm going to ask you a couple of questions. What does your art department look like at the college? It's great. Can you utilize the building to educate your children, your young men and your young women in that department? But I'm also going to plead to Wycomico County, and I'm going to tell you this. I was one of the very first recipients in Wycomico County as a VPA student in 1989. Does anybody know what that is? It's the Visual and Performing Arts Program in Wycomico County that was held up over at Wycomico County. I was one of the very first recipients. Had I not had that opportunity in Wycomico County, I probably would have been a person that would have been a construction guy, a bricklayer, and I'm not saying any of that is that. What I'm saying to you is, is it gave me an opportunity out of an economic situation that my parents could not afford. I had a full-ride scholarship for that. Okay? And what I can tell you is, is that I am a functioning artist at this time. I don't show my work. It's not hanging in the Ward Museum. But I do know that the VPA program suffers greatly, and I'm going to be an advocate for that in Wycomico County, because I'm still active in that. And the university has a crop of talented young students at their disposal that I don't even think financially you consider it. Here's what I'm going to say to you. You already know what you're going to do with the building. You already know what you're going to do with the property, because if you didn't, you wouldn't have done it so quickly and so quietly. Okay? As citizens and taxpayers, I'm going to say to you like this. The university is very important to our community, and we need it, but I want you to be aware that your tax dollars, no matter what side of the fence you stand on, are supporting this organization. And I'm going to plead to you that you make it known that your dollars in this community support this. And if they want to hang the artwork that is there, the decoys in the Powell Building, it's like taking a fine piece of artwork done by many artists that I know, including Mr. Brown himself, and the Ward Brothers, and many, many more artists, it's like taking a fine piece of artwork and hanging it in your bathroom. Okay? When we do that, then we actually take the opportunities of education and ability to teach and to give back to our communities, and we actually take that, and we lose that opportunity. And then I'm going to ask one other question in this day and age, and I don't care what side of the fence you stand on, but I'm going to make this, I'm going to make this question very clear. If this were a Black History museum, would you pull it? If this were a gay pride museum, would you pull it? If this were an organization that was a Holocaust museum, would you pull it?
Preach it. Go ahead.
Okay? Thank you. Moral of the story is, is that this is a craft that watermen like myself, and watermen like all over this country that supplied their families in subsistence lifestyles, became an art form, and you're taking that away from the community. And I hold you responsible as a taxpayer. I have two kids that have graduated from you guys, or one child, I'm sorry, that have graduated with you guys, and I've got one that's actually looking forward. I'm thinking differently. And that's a, that's a hit. That's a hit. To Wycomico County, I would like for you guys to look up at the Board of Education and look into the VPA program. Dig deeper and support those kids. I'm a positive product of that. I'll be happy to show you my artwork privately. Thank you.
That will conclude the public comments. I'd like to say, I want to thank everybody for coming out and taking your time, because it has been quite a while here. A lot of excellent comments. I think it's been a very productive evening. As far as the council's concerned, we certainly will try to keep the line of communications open as this progresses. So, again, we thank the university for being here, as well as everybody else. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Whatever you want to pull. Yeah, whatever you'd like to pull. That would be very good. Entertaining motion from Council to Zern to go in legislative work session.
Second.
Motion, second. Got a motion, second, for you. All right.
I called Wayne.
I'm going to take a break. I'm going to take--
He's already.
I'm going to take five minutes.
All right.
Pat.